All right, we're probably in order. It's six minutes past seven. We do have a form if we see an awful. That's the first thing that's going to do is. Do you want to see David's name as our ultimate tonight? Do I hear your motor? Do I hear your second? Okay. All of the papers are out. Hi, all of the folks. Okay, say your seat is better off than tonight. Uh, thank you very much. So we have two applications that come up tonight. Yeah, we can not have any. Sorry. And the first application is from Woodland Jardis five to fifteen. So that's applicants that simply leave. Section fifteen dot four dot two with the end of its own regulations. So as a limited and final two inches of topsoil. And final C gate at all those third areas of the site. Um, presentation by applicant, you know, presence management, all that other thing. Then we'll go into this on the second applicant. A lot of our discussion, you can present your application, all that sort of thing. Then we'll go to the meeting. Then we'll not the regular agenda for the regular meeting. Public people, people, yes. Is that a basic thing, like, when they're voting, they're willing to second powers will go on.
Probably.
Okay. And then it's provided here. Okay. So, uh, now we further view.
Actually, why didn't you say?
You're up. Sorry.
Do you, anybody? Do you, do you want to read it? What goes in the record?
Let me do.
Yeah, sure. All right, the end of his own work fields will hold public hearing seven P M. The review of the end of town hall seventeen school notice. Input on following applications. One, application of one of the entries five one seven one six. Have been secretly leaving certain sixty point four point two K. The end of total regulations. So it's eliminated required minimum two inches of topsoil in the final scene. At all disturbed areas of the site. Number two, application of Ben, Ben, Rick Salmon. Or sunset lane, not in secret relief from section eleven two zoning. For picturing application of secret reduction. Front yard setback, both sunset lane from fifty feet to forty six point five. Forty six point five and a decade inside that setback. Left hand side and right side drive from twenty five fifteen. Wants to allow replacement accessories stored. Comments, questions regarding the application for the entertainment period. Written comments, it is building land use office. Zoning at University key dot org. A minimum of forty four hours prior to meeting will get entered into the record. Additional details will be found online on a number of website. More about this building, land use office. At the end of town hall seventeen school code. More by calling will be six zero seven four two seven three zero five. Extension forty two point access to public, to public here usually can be arranged by contact. Oh, brother, phone number. Way to erosion of just, um, I did apologies. I believe I spelled savage wrong. Uh, savage is correct me if I'm wrong. Savage, S A P A U G.
It's a S A U G.
G G. Okay. And I believe I spelled right elsewhere. Thank God, yeah, it's going from. That memory. Black.
Right on here.
Okay.
Right on here.
Very good. Building or area. Good. On the senior. Let's see. Uh. See the box of page. Uh. Not so long. I've got pictures here. Pass.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Did I, so all secure when the hill does where it goes down. Secure grass written. So I will not have no work. Anything that goes anywhere is going to want my problem. They were a problem.
Can you, can you speak so that this, oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right here, so, um, I can see that. I can see where it slips that where it slows down. And then it goes up when it held in the grass goes down when erosion was, it's all grass. Plus I got two, two, uh, cell fences there. It's not going to go, it's not, it's secure, it's not going.
Okay.
Anything goes, anything, it's going towards my property. It's all tilted towards, uh, warning, sandwich. I just, so, sure. More fast, huh?
Yeah, I just look. No, you just, do you know, anything that you hand out? In the, yeah, it stays here as part of.
Yeah, that's, that's no problem.
Okay, problem. You can get it back. So proceed up.
So again.
I don't know.
But I see all my problems. It's just, I mean, you're. You can see the way it's slow. Everything not towards, toward my problem. Did you understand what you're saying there, Fred? Any questions on those?
Yeah, I think so. If you can just clarify. So, so you got this down the slope towards the silk fence, right?
On the silver fence. This goes down towards my problem.
Right, I saw that.
Here, right. So I, I should cure all that grass all the way down.
Okay.
The grass, nothing will go that way.
And the area that we're talking about is in here where you're.
Where, yeah.
Being asked to build, okay. Were you being asked to?
Yeah.
Yeah. Over, over seed. Okay, so it's this.
This all come towards, towards my problem.
Right, okay. So there's no contour, say toward the river?
No, not at all.
Okay, so this, is this what it looks like? When was, when were you taking?
Uh, okay. Should be a little bit greater, huh?
Yeah. Okay, so it's essentially. What is that, like sandy, sandy?
Yeah, it's all sand, it's all, uh, grass, sand.
Okay.
And mostly all the water. I've never seen a puddle up there yet.
Right.
All here is a deal. So. I mean, I'm actually taking my, all that water staying on my province. Nothing going east. Nothing at all impossible. You know, plus I got the silver fence besides the grass, two silver fences there. So I have to ask, and I have to want to put buffer before, uh, maybe.
Okay, so the silver fence is well.
Yeah. Yeah. Two, not one, still. It's four silver. Four. Who at the earliest days in two, in the last year? And you see how it comes, it's everything comes sort of my problem. Look at the grass, you see it going, going west. Which is, is the other problem, but everything goes west. I want to know. There's probably no one. Yeah, it's a little one center. Standard recording, also need to reuse. So this is the recording, right?
Yeah, just for no other.
So yes, the answer to your question, Leander, is yes, it's being recorded. Maybe two. I'm going to. I want to type it in there that yes, it's being recorded. Uh, any general questions?
It's not going to be a permanent barrier, it's going to be for site development. So. Site development, site development, it's not going to be a permanent barrier. It's just, you know, grass.
So you have this to.
Site development, you know.
What is?
I don't know. I've had several people contact me probably. Say, not the thing. You know.
Okay. That's all. Any other?
In other words, ready to build that right now. When you know, it's a thirty. It's true, a lot of dialogue. Right, let's start a little. Uh, he had comments, questions.
Uh, my name is Chris Bell. I'm the engineer on site. Well. And I just want to go. You probably leaving a few things out at the port. Um, we're not asking for a permanent variance here forever to be on the record. We just want until he sells the site or develops the site himself. They get an improved site and then we want to tip them. In other words, we want to put the topsoil where it should go. Because most of the site is probably going to be paved. And, um, it just makes sense to do it then. Uh, rather than doing it now and have to take most of it back out. And we made a low point in the middle that was requested by the time it's only commissioned as part of the restoration of the site two years ago. They approved the plan to, we, we had a low point, like a ponding in the middle of the gravel. No longer is left to go towards the west, towards his existing property. Nothing has ever gone. Because if it's, because it's type A soil, it's all sand and gravel. Whatever falls on it, it's put right into the ground. It doesn't flow out, it's no silts and. The, the soil at all, so for now. You know, we recognize it's, it's got to get topsoil sooner or later, but we just rather would do it later. When there's a development plan either by a new owner or by a mill. In the, in the very near future, because we have people looking at the problem. Um. The, one of the, one of the people that was open at it during the summer. He heard from the commission that they're going to require topsoil when the deal fits. So he was all set himself, so. It, it would be the best point to get the thing going is, is not to have to do it now. And, you know. He's not, he's agreed, you got to put it in, but you know, just want to permit the variance. So it's really kind of a temper. That's all I have to say.
We answered this for commission members to speak up.
Oh, commission, okay. Um, so I, I have a question. So that your, your soil on top there, is that gravel and sand or is it silt and clay? Cause I'm thinking if it's silt and clay, you might have some wind.
No, it's, it's all sand and gravel. We, we put on whatever topsoil was there. It was only about an inch of topsoil on there. You know, we thought there was a lot more. We did a couple of test bits that were three or four inches, but most of the site by the time we cleared it. Didn't have that much space, so we put back whatever we had. And some areas have no gaps. So there's like an inch or two to half. Nothing. But again, that's all the mole section.
And also.
And if you put topsoil in and now.
I can read it.
With that bowl there, it's going to take a ton and probably also. Now it acts as a perfect drainage.
So right.
And when it gets the boss new, you know, they're going to, it's going to be paved. They'll have catch patients as though, you know. I don't know. You know, store the water on site, they'll have to. You know, some store water on site because of the requirements of, uh, no extra water can leave the site. Commercial site, you've got a story on the ground or. You know, just like they did across the street, same thing.
Right.
So that'll, that'll come with.
So the reason why I question is really, say, say, if you see a site on the market. I'm trying to, trying to say that.
Correct.
Um, what if it, what if we grant the variance and it's on the market for some period of time? And if there's, my, my concern is if there's a lot of, say, silt and clay in there. You can have windborne stuff.
Sure.
All around.
There's no silt and clay in this, it's all standing around. And you're, you're right to answer the question, you could be on the market for a while. He's trying to, he's trying to sell, he's trying to retire. He's not going to hold on. For the investment he wants to.
How long?
Oh. What, the new one? There's a, I don't know. But she did.
Yeah.
No.
What do you want before that to all? Oh, we got along, buddy, buddy here.
A year.
Buddy here.
For less. The hand is for, first offers came in late spring this year. And then two serious offers over summer. And then funny guy was pretty serious, but it fell through because of. This problem not being cleared by clients. So again, we did, we grasp a site that flows towards the east. That whole slope there is all grass. So there's nothing going in that direction or not. So that was topsoil in the city. It would, you should be, that'll be there, you know, forever. That, that's proven.
Any other? Comments? Or more technical?
When we sell a property, what are people looking for? And what they want to do with it?
Stores, well, stores.
Stores.
Elton store developments and stuff like that. Why?
Uh, wetlands, recommendations about the town hall?
Uh, I have that too, you know, the wetlands recommendation. As far as.
They have a great data application down. They were very, they're part of the original. Or especially through the plan, it's sort of, well, there's an alien one as per it. As well as a plan commission. Apart from playing in zoning commission.
Are they, are they, is that required? The, uh, no.
No, it's, it's planning, it's planning and zoning regulations. And. The approved cycle. We don't, just to. Then you know about the, the wetlands, wetlands on this map is way beyond to the right. It's way at the top of the slope. And at the top of the slope, we are ninety five feet, not, not that much. You'll be aware to the right, the slope picks up steep. That's our two to one cut slope. On the top of that slope. And to the right was not disturbed at, at that point, we're like a hundred and fifteen feet from the wetlands. So we're not, we're not talking about anything that's anywhere near the wet. Though we're, or we're talking about that bottom of the site where it's all flat. Um, that's close to probably a hundred and fifty feet from the wet. So it's, it's just in that flat area. That we're talking about.
So I have a, going back to what Jen said, so it's in as far as the, the reason. For that you've been asked to put the topsoil on the grass. It was in planning zoning regulations and in a site plan that's been. That's been approved?
Yeah, the regulation's called for two inches.
Okay.
We had shown four inches because we thought we had four inches. We said, we're just putting back on like a half. And. Playing zone told us that they can't. They can't wait. So actually they didn't recommend, they suggested that, you know, maybe you go to the zoning board of appeals to get, uh.
Right.
Various. But then it'd be okay.
So there's been a site plan that's been approved that said, said that, so that's why, that's why.
Correct. And in the regulations, say it from gravity that's brought back. Okay, like there's ever not arguing that it doesn't need it, but.
Right.
Just then.
You have to read the, for the, you said, for you. I'm sorry. You have any, for that, you'd like to say before you go. Okay, so we can go to your, our delicate, then we're closing all speed and we're going to the record and. Okay, so, six pack, then. You know, that. And that was one pack. Ah, okay. Okay, so the, uh, second, uh, feeling.
I'd like to welcome.
Show it.
Wait. Um, Jim housing, zoning agent. And I've put together some background information on this application. Uh, and I'm prepared to read, um, like, perhaps. And what I'd like to. I'd like to clarify one thing. What's before the zoning board to build is seven. Looking forward, the applicant who referred to you from. The court of section, the rule section regarding topsoil, that's sitting in that one. There was, there had been numerous conversations over the direction of flow. Has nothing to do with C D's meeting as far as I'm concerned. I want to, it's sort of deep down. Also, I, I want to clarify one thing. Um, it's kind of turning for, um, the land's council. Our branch was getting the leading of the plan, it's, we, we made the indicated to the applicant. That. Playing the notice, not have the right to weigh the risk, some word field test. He did have recommended. He was actually. Take a little. But that was, um, this, this, this spoke in my mind. I should have said, he just said, that's, you would have to know C D A. That's fair. I, I look at that more of a suggestion than. And I didn't see that. I didn't mean to. No, that's okay. Oh, I'm glad, I sort of make sure that was clear. Um, I wrote this rather quickly, so it's important, important, the one section. Back on the information, Willie, you're playing Jardis by the time the end of the planning zone mission from the doctor in Sandy Rattle Operation. At the property five one seven three six. Like from Brandon, June two thousand nineteen, the app convinced taking Sandy Rattle from the property. The program was based on the restoration property according to the approved plan. Permit provides that on depletion, the removal of material according to your group plan. Yeah, it will stabilize the site expressing four inches of topsoil. And see the disturbed areas. Yeah. Store topsoil. On the site, the intent of reusing it for this purpose. Where the course of the work. The topsoil appears to have been mixed in with other material on the site. The result was that there were little or no topsoil remaining. There was, however, um. After some discussions, topsoil spread along the hollow, which is, um, there you go. It all run itself outside the property. Okay, and I believe for fifty foot. Bummer script, it was absolutely see. That probably, I can. See that, I can determine. The remainder of the site is seceding, but did not take due to lack of topsoil. Some investigation has managed to establish itself, material. Mr. Kennedy submitted application request approval modified play. Playings are one should show the topsoil on the hollow. No new material will be spread over the remainder of the site. Playing their efficient denied the request. On the basis of when complies with the regulations nor the group plan apply. Mr. Kennedy supply for variance secretly from second. Section of the regulations calling for the provision of two inches of topsoil, state permission. Of disturbed areas, expect force needed. Jim Allison.
Here we have. That brings up a new question for me, just, um, so in twenty eighteen. We got permission to excavate the land.
June, June third, two thousand. Right.
June third, okay. And when, when did the excavation? Since when you've done as far as.
Uh, November twenty second, two thousand twenty two.
Two thousand twenty two, so the land had been open right now for two eight, two land, two eight, two years. Right now, the land has been open.
It's been sitting like that for two years. Uh, you know. It was, it was seated, paid, but didn't, didn't come out. And then about a month ago. I advised Bill to at least get the slope fixed and make sure that there's a high point at the top of the slope. So nothing goes towards the east, everything goes towards his land, which. For the approval. The drainage was supposed to go half one way and half the other. He did what the commission asked and made it all go to his. And then basically, no, so we're. The water will. Stay on site.
Thank you. Anything else, Jim?
Sorry, I said. No.
Any more close to that, that one? Got any? Okay, well, now here are second, we'll see what follows later. Um, maybe I have a, okay. So it's not the application today is.
Is Karen?
Yeah.
Come on. Let me back.
You didn't require me to know about.
Cause probably everybody's patient with about what you've mentioned, like, well, maybe.
No, it'd be part of a couple of here, here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Cause the way you're, it's, it's. I'm sorry, that's fine. Do I? You know, you're ready, thanks. This is.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, um, there was, uh, so I know the hills on track, I'm watching, so. From the logo, and, uh. And I don't.
You just. Do you want to set, do you want to set up here?
Or just from the phone so that. Your daughter called, knows what you're deciding, but she's not like, can't hear us. You just want to come over. Yeah.
Geez. Jim, do you want me to keep sharing this or you want me to take that?
Just make sure this is a lot on the side. Your daughter. Can you keep going where we have on mine?
On Dan's on through.
Oh, okay, we have another.
Who is? Dan's. Pretty bad. All right, so you're to the side over here, but here you are.
Okay, let me know if I'm not. Thank you. Yes, um, to repeat, I'm Catherine Hutchinson. I have a thirty eight bunker hill road in the over. And I am the adjacent landowner, the budding owner. On the southeast as well as along the river. If you picture. Route six. The subject property. I'm, my land is here immediately adjacent. They subject property. Historically, I'm very good for my widow. And how it has been stable over the years. I have lived all my life within a third of a mile of the property, subject property. Purchased the land next to it in two thousand fifteen to add to, uh, the property that are already owned, uh, which is in. A farm land, uh, woodland, open space, preserving it for everybody. This all started back in two thousand nineteen. And I have, with the exception of the COVID years, when not too much was going on. Been present for every meeting, particularly in the last two and a half years. When the initial final restoration plan was submitted and. Just, um, not approved by the planning zone commission. And another one was filed. And was actually approved in August of two thousand twenty two. Prior to that, this land was. Had been mowing lot and Bill Merritt, who's. Her successor entitled to their piece. Um, kept it pretty much mowed until they passed away sometime around this two thousand fifteen. My point being is that it's always been a very stable piece. And even when we have the worst flooding and part of the floods. The water just went away because it was a fur, turf base and. It was established land with. Permanent seating. Which all changed with excavation. Which is why I think the planning zone commission in its wisdom, when it, uh. First approved the plan required that forages of topsoil be put down. So that when the land was completed and the site was restored, it should, uh, now. Anytime there's been any destruction and any, uh, removal, there has to be a restoration plan. And it has to be about any one sort of regulations. Excuse me. Granted, the zoning regulations, but a minimum of two inches, which is what was requesting the variance for. Um. I have allergies, I'm not sick. Um, they require me to have the four inches of topsoil or by the zone revision, two has a purse. And that is to stabilize the land. The land that's in the service on almost daily basis. And also again, John, journey land. I can see the effects it has had on the land. There's a fifty foot, not two hundred foot buffer between. The applicant's land and my. Um, I have personally seen. First of all, I will say that they have stabilized as near as I can see from the road. This is not permitted on the property. From the, on the road, on the steep part of the valley, as you see, that has just been done over the last month. And, but you can see from my property and from the road. That there is. A lot of sediment that has come off from it. And I have personally been down here and observed. Prior to that being done, but not from that area, but from the flatland, somebody mentioned before. That with it being open and nothing but the sandy gravel type material. And now, uh, not being, uh. Regenerating reverse with what the zoning regulations provide for any time. Strep of land. The blowing off. And you can see that, uh, it's a, not. Up and over along the, beyond the cell caps, it's just streaming off. They, I submit that the zoning regulations, this is very common to have. And that the zoning regulations are therefore in purpose. And they apply to everyone in town. Doing things for someone, I have a vibration, or even when you're building a house, you have to stabilize the area. You just can't leave it, so. Get the roads and blows, and you make the plant, et cetera. And, um, this area is far from stable. The, if I start to say the zoning regulations are there for a purpose. And that is so that the land is restored to a safe place where it is no longer vulnerable. Where it is no longer subject to erosion, no longer subject to the wind blowing. Um, there's a purpose here. And there's a very good purpose for it, as it don't. Um, so I want to actually prove this. Require four inches, I think, recognizing the area. In which this property is located. So. The, um, it was interesting that I've been pulling up the topic amount for today. And we don't have it up here anymore, but this entire area through years was proposed to be left. Like it was not. I'm saying it on security area. I've already seen the impact that has. Um, achieving property. And that's not going to go away simply because she was seated for that.
Can you tell me the way your problem is relative to this?
Where my problem?
Yes.
Okay. Route six, right? This is the third, my. My problem. My property is, it shows the line. But it's roughly fifty feet. I mean, if you haven't had a fifty foot follow. And. That actually, I mean, silk pinch. And they said it was okay, temporal, does go on the top. So it's fifty feet basically from. Um, every piece property.
Okay, I think going back towards the river.
Going back on the river, there's that, where I wasn't called.
All right.
So, and yeah, and the, the service road isn't very articulated, but it runs along here. And you can see all that, something's come off. And you can see that it's. Even pushed over something, part of it, yeah, so it's, it's, it has here. Bottom line is that, um, I started saying before. The regulations don't have purpose. And they're there for a purpose to protect. Not only the land for the land's sake, but also the neighbors. And it applies to everybody. If you could picture the speed. You know, your problem. I am accessing this material. Came across that as part of your website. You have a. Land use presentation, so it's done for Calvary. November of twenty one. By an attorney, Richard Roberts. And he's part of the material. And in it, he discusses. What, what is variance and what? Is necessary in order to. Um. Of tangents. And. As you probably have all heard, one of the very main reasons, one of the main is issues is whether or not. The uh, variance. It has to be harsh. Maybe that you need harsher for this particular piece of land. And if. It's, I submit that there's no particular hardship with this particular piece of land. And it. Again, it must be, variance must be considered with a general purpose and it's having zoning regulations. The kind of confidence of zoning plan. And it goes on to observe that variance should be spared and was granted. Variance is again, because of many first. But it also goes on to point out that. Where the hardship is not created by the.
Yep.
And that in this particular situation. The, there was topsoil there. It was supposed to be preserved. As a matter of fact, this whole project was supposed to be done in. Seconds, five seconds. And specifically approval initially provided for, you couldn't go on to the third section, third segment. And you only had two of the points at the same time, so you had to complete and remediate and then go on. That wasn't done, I think that's part of the problem. Whether or the topsoil was there to cover it, because as I said before, it was there before, it maintained a super basis for the vegetation. That was no erosion, no sediment flying around, it was the way. It was supposed to be. And the purpose of these zoning regulations is to make sure that this area is remediated and stabilized. After a project is done. And that wasn't done in this case, it's not stable. And. By. Maintaining the integrity of these zoning regulations by doing what they require. In this case, you could be two inch and then seeding. You're going to stabilize the area. And. Really, it's for the, you know, not only because of. What I see it doing to my property, but also with, it's, you know, it's a safety issue, it's blowing around, um, it's. Adversely affects. Trump property for no person other than. The extent, I presume that he would have to. Uh, to complete the project as approved and as required for by the zoning regulations. Um. It's not unique. Any of us would run into this problem if we tried to do this on. And. The topsoil was there at the, I was also attended the. Planning and zoning meeting where they applied for variance. Where he indicated that, yes, he had covered up. But he, the long that he put down, absolutely put down, he covered up in the subsequent. Removed and replacement of additional material on.
Thank you. Any other?
Just for the record, um. The workshop. Alluded to, it was held here as well. Same.
We had the exact same workshop, uh, and he's just moved to two thousand twenty three. Yep. So we're familiar with the laws and.
Oh, I.
We do, we need to educate ourselves on these.
And I think I've. My thoughts. Uh, I don't pay myself that many years. Or is that another?
Yeah, this wasn't Mark.
Yeah.
I provided this to you because it sounded like a.
Thanks for my hearing.
I'm sorry.
I think Mark had been for the, for the workshop. That should, that's a handout if you perish, then you use. You make it out. But just sure you know. You know, it's.
Thank you very much.
And again, this, I just wanted to add one of the, then the applicant, if you read through the numerous communications. Has been advised consistently that he's got to do this, it's not, well, just the. The end that came as a big surprise. As doing slash doing part of these, we have full site. Cool plan and August twenty two, um, repeated uh, communications. Thank you.
Um. Did the applicant respond to any of that? It's out of the, it flows now.
Just want to make a correction.
Just.
I, I, I think that this is your, your call.
Be concerned and if quick, isn't it in essence of the time.
It'll be, yeah, I just want to correct something. The applicant's access road, which is proprietary to this touch of the property, always has been, all the way, it's at a flood plain. It's six feet below the flood plain. We were asked that we can't fill it, so the flood plain. That's a hundred and forty feet of our property. The reason why the property lies that's shown on this map, because it would be way off the page. It's a hundred and forty feet picked up by a surveyor, it's actually relocated. Uh, so it's not. Twenty feet or thirty or forty, it's forty feet. At its closest point. And it's further ways, as you're closer you get to the road.
Sorry.
Okay, last response is done. Yeah, go ahead.
That's completely incorrect. My. I'm not.
Sorry. Sorry. Where is it?
When the math was filed, the initial plan was filed. It showed where my property is in relation to this. The elegance. It shows my boundary. And it showed the access road runs along here, this even is close enough, so this, this is the, I'm sorry, this is the fifty foot buffer. My property is fifty feet over here. That the. When the access road was put in and the silk fences were put in. The silk fences actually approached a little bit on that fifty foot, maybe I spoke if I said my name, but on the fifty foot buffer. So my property line. All right, there we go.
Snap right here. Speaking of that.
That's the big one.
Is that the next one playing?
Yeah.
Um.
You put the name.
Yeah. You just. Let me just share it so it's on the. Recording.
Can you see where it says access road, it's very, it's very thin. Show.
Oh, way down here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. The access road is here. And the silk fences are here, so my property is within fifty feet. Of, of the eastern portion of his land. Which is very close to the access road.
I'm going to probably call, I'm going to call.
If you go to the. Moving forward, um. Yeah. Fifteen seconds of the period, yes, um, perhaps after the hearing closes, I can grab that. That will be sent to the sheriff.
I think, if we have any more questions concerning that, we have, we can always revisit that later, we have our, rather we. I would like to move on to our second application now, that's. Sorry. Okay, so. Any more comments, clients? Okay. We are, go ahead, from here, uh, second, the applicant of the public immune, uh, applicant editor. Damage. Fourth goes that way, applicant seeking relief from section, but not to zoning regulation, particularly, the applicant is seeking a reduction in the front yard setback. Uh, sunset lane for fifty feet to forty six point five feet and is deducting into the side yard setback, left hand side. From lakeside drive from twenty five feet to fifty feet, so to permit a placement of an accessory. Hill.
Yeah, what I, what I would say is it's. Lakeside drive, it's from the property line of the people. Adjacent to us, it's addressed lakeside drive.
Oh, okay.
It's not to lakeside drive, which is plenty of farm up the way.
You have ninety nine and a half there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, but the property adjacent to us on the left side is. Today, to the house, it's about twelve feet. Or does the variance given a long time ago, so that that, that house could be built? What we're asking is for an outbuilding that's going to be about fifteen feet of property line when it's supposed to.
So I don't know, there's, there's another house, it's twelve.
A house number in.
Oh, is twelve feet of property. Yes, so. Problem. So here's, you stop now, this is lakeside drive, here's the shed in front, the photo shed in front. What are you saying, it's the house is already just called the property, that's his one.
This sounds, but this is G S U right here.
No, this is property.
People.
Oh, it's lake, lakeside, okay, and where's the other street there?
No other.
Sunset, sunset, where you're talking about. Sunset is a lane.
Oh, yeah.
One of the setbacks, that's where I was confused.
Oh, because right here says.
Sunset lane, that's why I was thinking, where is sunset? This is sunset lane.
I don't know, I think that that shows up.
Okay, so your property line is right here.
Yes.
And this is your address right here.
No. Your address is here, sunset lane.
Oh. Oh, it's really confusing, because you have a property line right there. What's right here, whose property is this?
That's sunset lane, sunset. Let's let me see.
This, this is sunset lane down here. Oh, what, what is this local property right here?
This says R O W, it's a town right away.
Oh, the right away, yes, ten fifteen foot from the, from the, uh, so this is, this is the actual street, this is your house, and your house is. What is your address?
Four, sunset lane.
Sunset lane, okay.
So you come down lakeside, you turn left, that's sunset lane.
Okay, so this, it looks bad, oh, like. How, how much is that?
How much is what?
Well, you're saying the town right of like, how, how? How much, is it, it just, it looks according to what I can see.
Usually, no, really, it's fifteen feet, isn't it?
Is that all that is?
The house.
I mean, no, it can be. This would be twenty. Okay.
So a setback from the road. Center line was almost right away.
Is, is more than this, it's twenty five.
There's twenty five feet.
Where's twenty five from the center, or it's fifteen feet from the edge of the road.
With roads in the. The right way with the barriers, they were to build a new road today. Well, the right. Piece of land that dedicated path would be given to one, okay, I know for a fact based on. You know, survey, the Zola Road was twenty, twenty, I believe it was twenty, or anyway, it was extremely narrow, could have been narrow. Uh, you know, it was built in nineteen thirty, okay, but under our boss. So again, to your question, I have no idea, it's not really an easy thing to do, I mean, I have to go back and search my record. It's very, very tedious.
So.
That will save you. So, but it doesn't come back. We'll set back from the center line of the road.
Okay, so my next question then is, the setback isn't from the center of the road though, is setback is from the road? Like, I know when I built my house, I had to be a hundred feet back from the road, so where? Where is your setback measured from?
Measured.
So he has to be fifty feet from the center of the road.
Yes. Now, what I. They have changed since you built your house, did you, I think, I believe.
Well, I'm a different zone, I'm a different zone too. I'm a two acre zone. Up there in Gersham Road, we're two acre, they won't pop size, so.
But, but it's still there, you say what.
Yeah.
But I think it's changed because of this computer, of nobody.
Right.
Uh, but really, what you have to do is, at that, against the survey, you know, it's true. Which is, it's one thing if you're going to the past, you know, it's another thing if you're going. Going to chat up.
Right, well, agreed. So I just wanted to make clear, what you're proposing is forty six and a half feet from.
Center of.
From the center of the sunset lane, and this is your side yard, and at first I thought we were on lake. And this is in the front yard, but you actually are, uh, your address is sunset, so your house actually faces this way, this is your side yard. Okay, and I got you, and then this is your, uh, where is your? Land on this side, is this your, is this your, your line right here? Or is it right to the street?
That's a pit.
Straight.
You go to both streets.
So you go to both streets, and, and so your, your setback here is supposed to be twenty five, and you want to change it to fifteen?
No, no, twenty six ninety nine.
Yeah, so. Oh.
This is the property line of the adjacent, adjacent property.
Great job, so you're looking at this setback here, it's supposed to be twenty five, and you want fifteen here?
Yes.
I got you. And just for the record, we received a letter from your neighbor.
Yes.
Okay, and that's the neighbor you're talking, that sent the letter, it's from this person.
Fifty one lakeside.
Fifty one lakeside, okay, this map.
What are the dimensions of the, uh, the shed?
Fourteen, fourteen by.
And we know which way is the line, is it twenty in this?
Well, it's twenty feet, yeah.
It's, okay, twenty.
So the, the house, the house is twenty four, so we're moving, we're, we're trying to put the shed. Adjacent to like, in the line of the house, so it's actually. A little further away from their property than the house is.
The house itself, not closer than what you're proposing for the shed. I, I got you, well, so, so your, your property therefore is roughly seventy five feet this way, is that what you're?
Well, I think, I think a property is maybe fifty feet.
Fifty feet. Very close to the road here. Okay, because I, I, I guess I'm just misreading this, so it says, because it says you have forty six here.
It's forty six.
Forty six, yeah, that's what I was not interested, okay.
Also the lot, I'm like, you're fifty foot wide.
Or fifty foot wide, yeah.
I mean, the house next to it is fifty feet wide, as you go down lakeside, those houses are, they don't even look fifty feet wide, but I guess they.
Okay, so according to, from what we're seeing here, there's no way you can legally put a shed anywhere.
Oh, yeah, yeah, he, he doesn't need it.
Fourteen by shed. Yeah, so what I was just saying too, this twenty foot is a pretty deep shed, you could build a slightly smaller shed.
Sure.
And, and, and be back to, well, not slightly smaller, because he needs twenty five feet.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right, and you're asking for a ten foot, so you'd have to build a.
Ten by four.
A, a ten by fourteen.
Or make it wider.
Or you this way.
You may be more, turn.
Yeah, but yeah, or you can turn it this way, right, you'd have more land this way, you could actually still. Do it like this, right, yeah, right here. If, it's being in line in the front of the house, you still have only a, a four and a half foot, uh, variance looking for here, which you wouldn't be looking for.
I think I'd still be looking for some kind of variance, there still would be twenty five, pretty sure.
From this, from this year?
Well, no, from here still.
Oh, because well, you, you really have a foot difference, right, you don't, you'd be a foot, within a foot. If you took ten foot off of this twenty foot, if you had a fourteen feet, you would be picking up. Well, sixty, you'd pick it up. This way. It'd be. Forty feet, you'd only be sixteen. Difference between where you got, yeah, twenty one. Feet from the.
Yes, part of what I was hoping. Was to be able to have the door here on the side.
Yeah.
Like twist the shed around, and I guess I'd be coming back around here. Like twist the shed around and I guess I'd be coming back around here to go in because I'm not going to be able to go to the side.
I guess the one key thing that I will, you know, is is this right here. Is already.
Those are pretty, that's when that was supposed to live zone. Yeah. The zoning.
Well, that's what I'm saying. So I mean.
Those are pre existing.
Where's the armor that fall, I guess.
The shed in.
He's my shed not existing.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's. So your current thought is so fourteen by twenty and you want to have the door.
On the front door, right?
Go to right it. Okay, so it kind of matches up with your influence.
Yeah.
Okay. And then, uh, I'm sorry, just to this this land over here is all over land too?
Yes, the lakes. This didn't doesn't look like it came out too well.
Okay. I'm just wondering how much land you have here and is there a possibility of putting?
Well, then it's.
But still the same thickness in this fall.
I got you. It's set set.
Septic there, okay.
Septic.
Quick shed on septic.
I think that's side shed, you know, the foundation is putting down skids on stone.
Just on stone.
Yeah.
Three quarter inch stone. It's probably three to five inches thick depending. There's not really much of a slope there, but somewhere between three to five inches. Probably block there's there way.
Well, the top of it here, it's still the same fall, right? It's still big problems. Definitely too close to this property line right here.
Yeah, yeah, and I don't I get I guess, I mean, there's a shed, I think there's a septic tank. And there's you can just about make it out. There's a pump tank here too. Gosh, so between those two things, I mean, to get access to those things, I couldn't really put it on top of those things.
You would have this.
Yeah, you'd have the same problem. You have the same.
Right.
Yeah, same the same distance.
Yeah. Front of, we'll call it north to south.
Yeah.
Still have the same issue.
I got that. So turning it this way here, again, you'd only pick up six feet more this way. Which would be less of a.
You could do by you could do a ten by twenty and.
Uh, you could do.
Yeah, fourteen, but it's about by twenty. Go on twenty on this way.
To get ten feet and fifteen, probably probably pretty darn close. I guess. Okay, any any, Kathy, you know, if you had any questions?
I'm just listening to everything that you're.
Okay. Okay, any other something?
That didn't appear. Didn't was. That that's a quarter lot, both both setbacks are. For the red setbacks. That's why in the designation section.
Same. All of them.
Because it's quarter lot, yeah. All setbacks, apartments, all.
Right.
Those are front fronts.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, you have a lot of you have a lot of.
And as well.
You have a lot more land this way, so. If you did move the shed this way a little bit.
Well. Yes, I I guess I could. There's the wells right here too.
You wells right there.
Yeah. So probably.
So again, to Dave's point, if you maybe did something that was. Ten by twenty this way here, just kept it off your well. He'd be twenty five feet in the road. You got plenty of land on this side here. I'm not telling what to do. I'm just thinking about hardship. So I. Because as as you heard, uh, Gavin Hutchison read earlier. The law says we have to have a unique hardship. Okay, so in other words, you have no other option and and so. That's what we consider when you when you make an application. So that's what we'll be we'll be weighing is is your options for your plot here. Could you have a shed somewhere on this on this plot that would? Satisfy the setbacks?
It's still nowhere. Well, yes, I can squeeze it and squeeze it. Uh, then maybe make this this.
Yeah, this one here is four and a half feet. It's and it's all at the page from center line when the regulations were that. I think that one had probably. For my for me anyways, is is the twenty five to fifteen setback here that I would be more concerned with and whether or not you could do something to modify your plan. But again, I'm I'm not going to tell you what to do. I'm just trying to. Think what is the hardship and brought to act, you know, appropriately, so. Right. But e- either way, it's kind of seems like it's going to build anything here. There's going to need to be some kind of, so is there a benefit to? Less of a bear? Well, I think the only I think he'd achieve his twenty five feet here if he did a, to Dave's point, instead of fourteen. If you did a ten by twenty and you turn it this way, you'd only be and and there's that. That gray area here, center of road, edge of the road, whatever. In in my mind, that's not a big deal for me to be there. I'm this is my opinion.
That's that's one of the things that, you know, when you buy a house on the lake, you know that.
You know that there are those issues.
I mean, and building you want to put up on that property is going to have to be a variance.
Yeah.
It, you know, and then. Is a variance required?
Right.
I mean, is it? I mean, it's a shed, right?
Yeah, I I mean. You know, one of the thoughts was, gee, you know, maybe we could even put a car in it. But you don't think you get it wrong, I think put a car. And wouldn't have to deal with stuff in the winter time.
That's right.
That's 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 why I give my hat to Paul. Want to keep on this way. Because you can drive initially here. So it's really more.
I mean, it's still based on your. It could come in here, try to.
Yeah, so where's your current driver?
Current driver, true.
Okay. Oh, yeah.
This didn't come out to will bring up, but you can't get these lines. It says driveway.
Yeah, yeah, awesome. Okay. It's wasn't seen in the setup, okay. And to your point, you could always access it from. Lane. Side possible. Again, I'm not, she should be able to, I'm just looking at. What you have available to you to work with. Okay, anything else you wanted to add? Okay, then, if that's everything, what I'd like to do is.
I I guess the one I think I think there is about a lot of people across the street.
Yeah.
Yes.
The people behind the saving, they look at that and say, yeah, we could with that.
The letter we had, what is that from here or from? I thought the letter that you that we have some people.
It actually should be two.
I got one letter. I saw one. I saw one letter. As David directly across the street, okay. So he said, so I. Yeah. That's that's the one I saw, right?
That's the one I saw.
That's the one. Yeah.
Here comes a name that I proposed here.
Here's. Here's from the people on one fifty one Lake Side, which is the north side of the house. Which is where the, you know, where I'll say there's less room.
Right.
I didn't really give it to them.
Okay, so both your neighbors. So we're gonna have to then there. Simply leave it on the other side of the bathroom.
Those are the people that the house is twelve feet away from their property.
Right. You want to see the letter? We'll keep this.
We can keep the.
Yeah, okay, okay. All right, anything you want to add? Okay, yeah. So, uh, we know further public, any further public comments? And we're to close the, uh, public speaking portion of the hearing and adjourned and we are going to open the regular meeting agenda. And we'll call it over here. It's black after eight. Uh, full call. We got C N O saying, uh, people are receiving. Uh, are there any additional changes to the agenda?
Commissioner Roden.
Yes.
You you don't really need to seat anybody for public hearing. You don't need to see.
I did that at the beginning just because I wanted to get that.
But you should see, scratch any for the meeting.
See them again?
Yes.
That's I did at the beginning of the meeting, but okay. Do I hear a motion to accept the standing as our alternate for the seating?
I think.
Uh, Fred Oliver and I have second. Anthony, is it a scorecard? Scotty. All approved, all in favor. I all close. Okay. Okay. Um. Are there any additional changes to the agenda? I don't know. Right? No. Okay, so we are here to discuss now, um. And through the public speaking, you can ask questions. That's the removal to be there. So we're to discuss the first application, what benefits five point seven. Who's set up considering from sixteen dot four dot two of the interviews on regulations. So as the limited requirement minimum two inch catch rail and final seating at all disturbed areas of the site. I will entertain, uh, any motions at this. Point.
So make one.
I will. You know, uh, I'm going to make the motion not to accept the application that is submitted. Uh, will anybody second that? Right?
I would do it as motion to accept it and insult that.
You can't motion not to accept it? No one wants to make a motion to accept it? Let's serve some.
Yeah, you have to do like motion to accept and then.
Okay, will they motion? Uh. That true? No, is that set the variance?
And then if you want or against it.
Wait, wait a second. Do you have that question?
So to vote, there has to be at least some kind of motion entertained whether the votes are against. It can't just be no.
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't use it to to approve it enough.
Yeah.
Okay, so I can't make a motion. You can to deny the application or not?
You can, uh, very often it's recommended that that you. That if you done it, you're perfect. And then if it doesn't make it. Personally, I like to go back and then deny. So the fix better, but I believe that it's okay to. If. What the children playing zoning commission does is if they don't approve, you know. Chairman will make a motion to approve and if it doesn't fly, it's considered denied.
Right.
Oh, I like that it actually.
I got it. I I got it. Different. I guess with the last thing, that's okay. Yeah, was the last time we went through this, it was a totally different response that we got from the lawyers, from Eric or everybody else, but. Just to say, I'm sorry to give you away. Uh, I will make a motion to approve the application, uh, from Williams N B H five seventy or six. Uh. As. Uh, submitted. Do you need to second? Do I need to second? So that might not make sense to do it that way. Just one number seconds. It only makes sense for me. Nobody's to make the, uh, no one's to make a motion to approve it. And I'm going to make a motion not to approve the motion. And and then I'm going to, I'm sorry. I'm going to make a motion not to approve it and and have a second. No seconds, my motion approved it because no way there's no discussion. Okay, so. Does make sense to do it that way. It only makes sense for someone that wants to make a motion to approve or not.
You have to act.
Sorry?
You have to act for that tonight. You do have to act on the application.
I know that Jim, that's that that's not a question. The question is, is there a motion to approve the application? Nobody said anything. So I made the motion not to approve the application. He said second. Second by Fred Oliver, discussion. All those in favor of the motion not to approve the application is submitted, say aye. Aye, all opposed. But staying. Sorry. Okay, we will not want to accept. Application.
Thank you for your.
Thank you for your time, thank you. Thank you for coming out. Okay, on second application, uh, application of Edward Savage for Sunset Lane application, seeking relief from. Section eleven dot two of the zoning regulations, more particularly the application seeking a reduction. Front yard setback from Sunset Lane is for fifty feet versus twenty five feet reduction. And the side yards back left hand side of Lake Side Drive from twenty five feet fifty. So as to allow placement of necessary. Join your motions. Um, I would make that motion to approve it. Um, I wanted to discuss it, but I I would make the motion. Okay, we will second the motion. I will second the motion to approve. Okay. So. Now, as I was discussed, my my question is, as it was before, uh. Is there, and maybe this is my question for Jim, is there any any benefit to asking to change the medicines of that shed? Or is just variance variance level?
And I mean, the variance of that as it is.
Right.
You want to turn at the eyes.
Okay. Right, so you could deny, you could obviously change if it is. Yeah. If it wasn't a matter, you could always. You know. Very, you know, changes in the standard, raises setbacks, whatever, and reapply. But that's the. Okay, so yes, they could obviously reapply. Okay, with a different application.
You could make a motion and second just for discussion, babe, and then vote against.
Okay. Now, I'll I'll stay with that that motion to approve. Okay. That one, do you have any? Discussion? Okay. Some further discussion?
It seemed like it was. I get it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, very, this was great preference. Well, we have. Okay, so, um. It's a noteworthy discussion. I will call a vote. All of us in favor of approving the application. As submitted, say aye. Uh. Yeah, it's that. Your application is there and you're good to go. All right, thank you very much all for. Okay, you will say or leave, but thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you for this.
Well, thank you for coming out on top of this. Okay, um, is there any old business to? I don't believe there is. We do have the minutes from the last meeting. I didn't bring it in my confession. You got the record moment there for you. Um, Dave was, he's going to vote on that, but we could vote on this. It would be the majority. Yeah, do I take a next to you do them and take you to a better. Better. From bad. I was like, hold on. Thank you. Good night. And they were from February. They're actually from February. All set? You got your motion? You make a motion to have seven minutes submitted. Is that a second anywhere? I'll second that. That's Fred. Any discussion? Corrections?